Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, January 23 Committee of the Whole Meeting. This is the meeting where this acts basically as, many of you have been to some of our individual committees, Infrastructure Services, Land and Shore, this is basically a large committee meeting. So, we don't make any decisions here tonight, but we get information. And one of the things that I'm going to do here for 2018 is we will take public comment at Committee of the Whole meetings, but again, because we're not taking any action tonight, as we get done with individual issues, you're welcome if you have thoughts that you want to share with us. I'll offer people three minutes. But again, if you're looking to tell us to do something, tonight is not a night that we are doing specific things. Tonight is a night that we are listening by and large and asking technical questions. And with that, we're going to start off with ID 0187 Human Services Presentation by Derek and Vanessa from Human Services Commission.
Yes, good evening. So, I'm Martha Sasserosi, Human Services and Social Sustainability Coordinator for the city. And so I just wanted to introduce our Human Services Commission Chair Derek Franklin and Vice Chair Vanessa Musavizadeh will be presenting about the commission and some of their current and recent work. Thank you.
Can I put the power?
Yes, and I will. That would be helpful, huh?
Great, thank you Martha, members of the council. Good evening. Derek Franklin serving as Chair for the City of Issaquah Human Services Commission. And tonight, we will just go through a few things, just a quick introductions. We'll look at our grant review process, again, for grantees that ask the city for funds to support the work that the city's prioritized. We will talk a little bit about our process improvement efforts over last funding cycle, talk a little bit about our grant vision statement that we've been working on, and then again, familiarize council members with the 2018 schedule for the 2019-2020 funding recommendations and next steps. So, there were a few new faces, I think, on council, on the commission. Our commission members, and if I ask if they wouldn't mind standing up if you were here, Senthil Chandran, myself, Derek Franklin, Loretta Jankowski, Anna Jimenez Inman, who's not with us tonight, Elizabeth Malpom, in disguise, hi Elizabeth, Matthew Mayer, Vanessa Musavizadeh, thank you, Rebecca Smith, there's Rebecca, hello, and Christine Chris Weber. So, these are the folks, and thank you for your service that have volunteered with me on the commission. The group represents a diverse mix of residents from the city, different backgrounds, folks from tech, folks from human services, parents, folks familiar with senior issues and across the board. And we're looking forward, I'm looking forward to working with them to give ultimately council recommendations for human services funding. A little bit about the role of the commission. The major role of the commission is develop funding recommendations to the mayor and the council for human services support for the residents of Issaquah. We develop an annual work plan to address ongoing work and emerging issues, human services issues. There are critical needs out there. We will be bringing those to you as part of our work, such things as the crisis around homelessness, critical need for behavioral supports in the community, and the fact that many services simply aren't available with footprints in the City of Issaquah. All those and many other issues factor into the recommendations that we'll be providing. Other examples of the work of the commission include the chair serving on the advisory group for the Community Needs Assessment conducted in 2017, the joint commission meetings we attend with the Planning and Policy Economic Vitality Group to inform the housing strategy for in 2016 and 17. The commission also tracks and provides input to staff on issues including senior services, the senior center, community health engagement locations, and community concerns around safety and inclusiveness. Human services grants. So, a little bit about the grants. They're on a biannual cycle. Applications are received and reviewed in even years for funding for the subsequent two years. For example, applications were last received and reviewed in 2016 for funding in 2017 and 18. This work is part of a 17-city collaboration. Seventeen cities in King County collaborate to use a shared application process which allows the different cities and commissions of those cities to have some sense of working collaboratively when that's appropriate. It also allows the different folks that are applying for grants that might apply to multiple cities to use a common application process, simplifying things on that end, giving us on this end probably better information that we can relay and look between cities. Funding levels and the number of applications over the last two cycles. In 2016, the city received 75 grant applications requesting a total of nearly $700,000 in funding. The city has set a funding target of $371,500 for annual human services funding. The commission delivered previously a set of funding recommendations then totaling exactly $371,500. And those recommendations were adopted as part of the budget for 2017, and then later as part of the budget for 2018. Those are organized. The recommendations are in goal areas. The commission uses five goal areas to categorize programs akin to buckets to organize the grants when they come through the door. These goal areas are the former goal areas established by the United Way of King County. And they're currently also used by the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, and Redmond for their framework or buckets to help organize the grants as they come in.
Actually, can I ask a question?
Yeah, please.
Are, looking right there. So, in the, there's two different human services grant process. One is the one that runs through the Human Services Commission. The other's the one that runs through, or maybe that's the same one that runs through Services and Safety. But as I recall, the amount requested, in previous years, there, I don't believe there was such a large gap between the amount requested and the amount that was sort of in play for a budget. Is this unusual to have such a difference this time around? Because it seems like in the past, they've been a lot closer to matched.
Well, let me give you my sort of year and a half perspective on that. And that's, my day job is in human services also. I think there is sort of a sense of this new normal that's been happening for five, six, seven years or more where the needs simply are outpacing the demand. I know this, the last cycle saw more applications than the cycle previously, and the amount varies with that. I think part of that probably is attributable to the coordination among the cities. I think there's probably better information out there, better support from your city staff and the other staffs of the cities on the east side about supporting solid applications. In terms of the history, I could perhaps ask one of the staff to hop up really quickly if you wanted to get a few more numbers. Martha may know that, but otherwise, I'm sure they'd be able to deliver kind of a history of that specifically. Martha, do you have thoughts on that?
Yes, I'd have to follow up on the amount of the total funding requests that we received in 2014 for '15 and '16. But the jump in applicants went from 56, 57 applicants up to 75 in the last cycle, as one measure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. So, the goal areas or buckets are food to eat and roof overhead, supportive relationships within families, neighborhoods, and communities, a safe haven from all forms of violence and abuse, healthcare to be physically and mentally fit as possible, and finally, education and job skills to lead an independent life. A few service highlights from the fundees or grantees from last year in 2017, and thanks to city funding, 6,044 meals were provided by Catholic Community Services and Sound Generations. 180 one-way trips for seniors were provided for east side Friends of Seniors. 162 hours of advocacy and support for domestic violence survivors was provided by LifeWire. 62 rent utility and security deposit payments were provided through Hope Link, Issaquah Community Services, and St. Vincent de Paul. 27 medical care appointments were provided, Issaquah residents that wouldn't otherwise be able to have those by HealthPoint. Those are just a few examples of the services provided through the grant process, grants dollars through the city. A few grant process improvement efforts that I wanted, we wanted the council to be aware of. And again, these are just a few visuals. The one on the bottom isn't meant necessarily to be read now, but represents some of the process improvement work that we've done. One, and so first, 2018 is an application year. We'll be receiving applications this spring and preparing funding recommendations for the council by this fall. In anticipation of the application process, the commission identified work to improve the application review and funding deliberation process. That really represents the majority of the work that the commission does when those grants come in to go through a comprehensive review process involving scoring, online scoring, details, looking at each grant individually, comparing grants, putting them in buckets, depending on the city's priorities about those buckets, then allocating funding based on the bucket priorities as well as other things like, on your upper right, graphically represented is the Community Needs Assessment. The city went through that process in 2017, creating the Community Needs Assessment for Health and Wellbeing in Issaquah. We're currently using the CNA, finding some themes in our current discussions for priorities and criteria. This evening, the commission actually has a meeting after this. This presentation will be providing grant feedback on city-specific information that is provided as a supplement to the shared application. So, the City of Issaquah, we're able to give specific direction on the common application that goes out to grantees, trying to best kind of hone their responses to the kind of responses the commission's looking for, based on feedback we've got, both from the Community Needs Assessment and from our work in the city. So, this cycle, the commission has several new resources that are going to help with us. I already mentioned the Community Needs Assessment. We've created a vision statement for the Human Services Commission. A colleague, Vanessa, will speak to that in a moment. But this statement is specific to the human services grant process and helps us provide some clarity and direction. The diversity and number of grants, over 70 that come in, takes some time and some effort for us to help categorize those properly and creating the vision that helps allow us to do that has been, I think, a great step. In addition, the commission will have equity training. The City of Issaquah, along with the cities of Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and Semamish are working together to provide an equity training to all human service commissions in those respective east side cities ahead of the application review process. This training will support the commission's effort to apply an equity lens to its application review and funding recommendations process. We'll have time for some questions, I think, after the presentation for the second part of this. Let me kick it over to Vanessa.
Thanks, Derek. As Derek shared, each funding cycle, we try to improve the process and outcomes. In past cycles, the commission has relied on the human services element of the comprehensive plan for some guidance in making its recommendations. The goals and policies laid out in the element call out some particular service areas and populations, but are otherwise fairly general in their description of support. Feedback from commission members after the last cycle included a request for guidance specific to the granting process. So, the commission decided to create a Human Services Grants Vision Statement. The new Human Services Grants Vision Statement supplements the overarching human services element vision. It reads, "The Issaquah Human Services Grants Process Values Equity and Inclusion, Promotes Economic Stability, Addresses Under-served Needs, and Demonstrates Impact in Order to Better Support a Sustainable and Healthy Community for All." As we proceed with our work to improve the funding process, the Human Services Commission will use this vision statement as our anchor. Additionally, we hope that the vision more clearly shares the intent and importance of city-supported funding for human services in our community. This next slide is a look at milestones in the application process. In March, the application will open and two funder's workshops will happen, one in east King County and one in the south. The application closes April 10, and then staff will do an initial review of applications and prepare materials for commission members. The commission anticipates beginning its review and deliberation of applications in May. We will meet five to eight times in total to complete our review and recommendation process. Our package of funding recommendations should be finalized at our September meeting and go to council via an agenda bill in October or November. Contracts will go into effect in January. Also, during past review processes, there have been opportunities to check in with other east side commissions to hear updates on their funding deliberations. We hope to have a similar opportunity this year. Before the application period opens in early March, staff will be going before council at the Services and Safety Committee meeting to set a funding target for the 2019 and 2020 Human Services Grants. They went before Services and Safety in 2016, ahead of the last RFP as well. Application materials will be finalized over the next five years. Equity training will occur in March. The commission will proceed with its process improvement work through April. We now welcome any questions or feedback that the council has for us.
Questions? All?
I think you have a question. In your five goal areas, which one would services for seniors fall within?
Hi, so I'm just going to jump in too for some Q and A with our chair and vice chair. So, it would depend on what program for seniors. So, for example, Sound Generations' Meals on Wheels falls into the roof overhead category because it's providing meals. So, it's based on the primary services.
So, if I remember correctly, didn't, you said these are modeled after the United Way categories, but didn't they de-emphasize services for seniors a couple of years ago?
Yes, so United-
Could you update me on that?
United Way of King County no longer uses these goal areas. They came out with a new strategic plan in 2015 with entirely new areas, funding areas. So, they no longer fund senior programming as they had-
So, we have not just followed suit, and so we're staying with those older criteria that still we give consideration. It's not all targeted funding. We give, we use our own criteria using these goal areas, but we're not targeting as much as United Way is, of King County is.
Correct. So, I would advise that these goal areas be considered as kind of categories and frameworks. So, they just help us to, as Derek mentioned, kind of bucket similar programs. And it's very much the intent of the commission to fund across services, across populations, so taking into consideration basic needs as well as kind of areas of heightened need that we've identified locally.
Okay, I do appreciate that last comment because, especially you said across populations. I was kind of looking for that in the vision as well. So, I'm just sharing that with, from everything I just received, I was looking for that, and thanks for those words. Fill it in for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
Not even Chris, huh?
I realize I shouldn't have said Paul. I should have said Councilmember Wintersstein. But thank you for pointing out my mistake.
Doing my job. So, clearly, there's a lot of unmet need for human services in the community, given the disparity between the request and the awarded. So, in the 17-18 cycle, you awarded $371,000. What was your target for that biennial cycle for funding?
So, we had gone to Services and Safety Committee and council to set that target amount.
So, that is the target amount, right, on the nickel?
Yes. So, the commission had that number to work with as they were preparing their recommendations.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
And I'll mention, that's actually based on $10 per person for the city's population, plus there's another lump sum that-
Yes.
-that goes in addition to that. Councilmember-
Yes, so that had been set based on kind of a per capita rate, and then also some targeted funding to better support programs serving folks experiencing homelessness.
Did you have a follow-up?
I'm great, thank you.
Councilmember Ratis?
Thank you. Martha, could you just speak to generally, the goal areas and the buckets are fairly new and how that's helping and driving the grant process?
Sure. And I also welcome, so Derek has gone through this process before, the funding application review process. And last cycle was the first time we introduced the goal areas, because some of the feedback we had heard from prior cycles is that comparing, at that time, 56 applications, you know, Application A versus, you know, Application 26, 45, right? We wanted to group like programs to better inform funding decisions. And so, this framework gave us a way to consider, you know, if there are two family shelter programs, the commission can better kind of compare outcomes and service levels between those two programs and decide if it would be best, for example, to fund both or make a more significant investment in one.
And then, just a follow-up question. What are the results that you've seen with that grouping? Does that mean that, for instance, certain groups that may have been funded in the past are not receiving funding because there are so many within a category? Or are there, are there outcomes that you've, that you've talked about in your continuous improvement process, things that have come out of using those goal areas?
And I'll defer to Derek, just a moment here, but I would say that I don't know that the categorization necessarily led to, you know, some programs not being funded, others being funded. I think it was a way to support making clearer comparisons between like programs, and also a way to consider, you know, relative investment in one area like healthcare versus another area like employment. And thinking about relative investment, one of the things we had also looked at ahead of the last cycle was where we were investing those dollars within, across the five goal areas, and found that there was a significantly smaller portion of funds going towards, for example, employment and job skills. And so it helped us to identify some areas where we potentially would want to have more investment.
Okay.
But also understanding that there's a funding cap, and so not all applicants would, A, receive funding or receive more funding. But Derek, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I had a few things. Thank you. I think the part of the work too had been to, you know, identify, as Martha was saying, when we have multiple grants that fill into the same bucket or the same, kind of generally serve the same folks, it would, because we've got only so much capacity, meeting to meeting with so many, we would try to get through either one or half of one or two, one meeting at a time. That would, by putting them in buckets, it would allow us then to, for example, say, if we're dealing with the issue of folks experiencing homelessness, and we have somebody who's applying for funds from the city, we would look at multiple categories sort of next to one another for that, for that application. So, for example, you know, what are the outcomes they're promising the city based on the dollars? And how many of those outcomes, which is maybe little people served, how many of those folks live in Issaquah? And what is the fiscal capacity of this grant applicant versus the next grant applicant to be able to provide these services? And are there any services being duplicated? If we have two quality services and one is saying they can serve more than the other, so we kind of look at the larger picture that way. And we also consider the scope of what folks are asking for. If, so if somebody is asking for, say, $15,000 for a program that serves 100 people versus $2,500 for a program that serves 10 people, that may be an equivalent. However, there's, we need to take into account also the administrative costs and overhead of going, do we do two grants for 1750 and pay double the administrative fee? Or what if we can do one grant that would better serve a larger number of people and save that little bit of overhead? So, having all those questions kind of lined up next to each other makes it a little bit easier, I think, when we're getting sometimes very similar grant applicants.
Right, thank you.
All right. If you'll continue?
That's our presentation.
And that wraps up the presentation.
All right. Thank you very much. And then we will, now I'm going to offer, if there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak to this measure, again, we're not taking any action this evening, but I'm going to offer an opportunity to folks in the audience. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this before we move on? Going once, going twice? All right, we will move on. And next, we have ID 0170, Community Fund 2017 Report. And this is from Amy Dukes, our arts coordinator.
Hi, I am Amy Dukes. I'm the arts coordinator for the city and also development officer, and also part of the staff team that supports the Community Fund Program. So, just a refresher or an intro, the Community Fund Program is a program that supports capacity building grants for our local nonprofits to help them better meet their mission and better serve our community. So, in 2017, we funded eight projects, two capital projects, and six projects that were primarily for things like staffing support, staff development, technology, and that totaled $113,000. So, tonight, each of these groups is going to come to you and give a really brief presentation, right, five minutes or less, and let you know how they used the funding, what impact it had, and feel free to ask some questions. We're going to start with the two capital projects and then move on to the others. And we are going to go in reverse alphabetical order because we never do, so.
Throw us a curve ball.
Yeah. So, Village Theater is up first.
I didn't bring my tap shoes, I'm sorry. You said five minutes, and I just couldn't get it cut down. Hi, thank you so much for your continued support from the city. I'm Frank Stillweger. I'm the Director of Development at Village Theater. In 2017, we were awarded $25,000, which was the first of, we hope will be a four-year, $100,000 total grant for this project. We've also received notice that for 2018, the same amount. Just to start, for those in the room, that Village Theater is currently the largest fully producing theater in the Pacific Northwest, with a current budget of over $13.2 million. We have three facilities in historic downtown Issaquah, the Francis J. Goddett Theater at 303 Front Street, First Stage Theater, which is where Village Theater started on Front Street at, in the original 1913 building that we rebuilt in its likeness seven years ago, and the Craig and Joan Watch and Production Studios. The Warehouse and Artists Residency Project will be built adjacent to the tech studios. We currently own that land and are getting ready to move forward with the project. And we thank the city for the support of all of the projects they have since we started building our capital in 1994, when we opened the Francis J. Goddett Theater. All of our buildings, here in Issaquah, house our three major programs in some way. Our main stage that has currently over 20,000 season subscribers and serves in the City of Issaquah, over 120,000 people annually. First Stage Theater, which is dedicated to our new works and youth education programs. Our new works, primarily our Kid Stage, our Kid Stage and Pied Piper. Pied Piper and Kid Stage together serve over 57,000 youth and their families annually. And to date, we've, we have touched over 165 new works. Several have gone on to Broadway and two of one Tony Awards, Next to Normal, which was written by Issaquah resident and Kid Stage kid Brian Yorkie, who also won Pulitzer Prize for that musical, and Million Dollar Quartet, probably the most famous of our shows that's come out of the City of Issaquah. So, since we last met and talked about this project, there was a huge change of scope because we were also, we've also been looking simultaneously for a place we house our artists often. We currently rent from the apartment buildings next to the theater, and we went back to the architect and said, what would the- And we went back to the architect and said, what would this project look like if we were to add on top of the warehouse, six apartments with a community space for artist residency? And would that even be possible? And how much would it decrease the overall warehouse space? The decrease was not that much. The actual decrease has come because of the easement that's had to come, the 20-foot easement between the two buildings that was, that is being required, but we're going to utilize that for parking. So sort of catch 22, but the change of the scope has also increased the overall cost of the project. Obviously, we originally considered it about a $1 million project. It's added about a half a million dollars to the overall project for 1.5. We are still committed as an organization, because of the savings that we will see from not having to rent warehouse space, not having to rent six apartments, we'll still have approximately about $120,000 annually to put toward paying off a mortgage that we will have on the property as well. In, let's see, currently, we're in the final design, engineering, and cost of construction phase, so we don't anticipate it'll go much more than 1.5 million for the project. And our goal is to move into permitting here in early 2018 with an anticipated groundbreaking in the fall of 2018 and the facility opening approximately six to seven months after we break ground. And we're really pleased to announce that we received a naming grant for, in the tune, excuse me, $300,000 from the Anderson family. So Dan and Portia Anderson, who are longtime residents of Issaquah, and Dan has been on our board for over 30 years. And so this is their legacy, Dan has been committed to these capital projects since the beginning. He heads up our Facilities Committee on the Board. And we got an early Christmas present. We actually received a call two days before Christmas from his sons, and the family has come together in their parents' honor and awarded this grant to us. Any questions? Did you want to? Yeah. Do you want me to just advance it? Let's see. So this is what the current facility looks like. You can see it has nice windows. It'll overlook the city of Issaquah's facilities plant right now, but we understand that that won't always be there. But it's also very close to Confluence Park. There'll be a private entrance on the right as well as an outside entrance for the building. And warehouse space will allow for props, scenery, and costume storage down below. And up above, six apartments are, contracts with Actors Equity require that each actor have their own bathroom as well as a kitchenette of some sort within the place that they stay. And so these allow, we've actually walked into areas that are this big, if you walk through Ikea, there are whole apartments that are about this size that have, that will probably end up looking very similar, with a full kitchen, laundry facility with multiple washers and dryers, and a kitchen and common area. I think that was it.
Any questions from the dais? All right. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Good evening, council members. I'm Kristy Garrard. I'm the Executive Director for Highlands Council, and our offices are at Blakely Hall. And I'm here tonight to thank you so much for the $15,000 grant that we were awarded last year to improve the acoustics inside Blakely Hall. We installed sound baffling panels on the perimeter walls to improve the overall acoustical experience and protect the reputation of this beloved community resource. Best told in pictures, I think. At Blakely Hall, we're busier than we've ever been. We have 25 free clubs and groups that are resident volunteer-led. In 2017, we held six community-wide meetings, many of those were with partnership in the city of Issaquah. We hosted five receptions with Art East, as Blakely Hall serves as a gallery space for this organization. Four events by the Issaquah School District or Issaquah Schools Foundation. We had three live music events. And the photo that you're seeing here is from November Standing Room Only Veterans Day Ceremony, which was really beautiful. And so in this photo, you can see the panels near the ceiling of the room. I think we are well-known as an organization, as a community, for a very diverse population. And just in 2017 alone, we hosted eight different multicultural celebrations. These two photos, while they're not the best photos, show the acoustical panels at work. And so the photo on the left is from the Chinese Heritage Club's Mooncake Festival. And on the right is from October's Dewali Celebration. And I would like to personally thank you as the mentor for the Highlands Youth Advisory Board. This group of teen leaders produce events for their peers at Blakely Hall. And we did six events last year. And since the sound baffling went in, I go home with no headache anymore. So first, just had to throw that in there as a personal thank you. And pictured here was the first of four campaign forums that we hosted for last summer and fall. Last Wednesday, we had a community-wide meeting in partnership with the city of Issaquah to discuss, continue the discussions around traffic and pedestrian safety. And just in the first quarter of 2018 is a list of the events that we have on the schedule. We have a free father-daughter dance, Chinese New Year celebration, a Bollywood concert, a seminar on environment and spirituality, two gardening seminars, a Purim celebration, Latino club will celebrate Children's Day, and then a teen flashlight egg hunt. That takes you through the end of March. So we couldn't, we were able to host these events and make it a really high-quality experience because of the generosity of the city of Issaquah. And I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Doesn't look like there are any. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right. Amy, next.
I am Therese Vafizadeh, and I am the Founder and Executive Director of the Tavon Learning Center. We provide a post-high school education solution with people who have intellectual and developmental disabilities. And I want to thank you so much for the $10,000 grant you gave us. We used it for business model development and staff training. It really helped us take our program to the next level. So with this money, we were able to complete our business model as of October 1st, which was when we implemented it. We had our staff trained in task analysis, positive behavior support, and functional academics. And as of the end of the year, 75% of our members had a pre-vocational goal. This is just a visual of our program model. So we serve adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities over the age of 18 years. We have four programming areas, daily living, functional academics, recreation, and community connection. We have a very hands-on or experiential-based learning. We use peer coaches in order to implement our program. So most of our staff are young people in their 25 to 30s. And I intentionally hire people this age, being a mother of a young woman who's 34 and has a disability. She'd much rather hang out with her peers than hang out with her mother. So, you know, they just have different interests. Our program functions in four different environments. Our outdoor garden, so we have six acres up on Black Nugget Road where our facility is, that's what we call our home center. We have our life lab, so we've rented another house right on Black Nugget where we do our functional academics program. And then we're out in the community almost every day. Our outcomes are independence, friendship, community connections, confidence, self-worth, having fun. The caregivers get a break, and parents have a peace of mind that their son or daughter is continuing to learn in a safe environment. The learning portion, in order to have this type of a program, it was important that we were able to educate our staff. So we worked with Terry Johnson, who's an expert in systematic instruction, which is basically taking a task and breaking it down into very small parts so anybody can do a piece of that task. We had Terry follow up with our staff in February and March. And then we worked with Candy Steyer, who created the Steyer Fitzgerald Curriculum for Functional Academics. This is a curriculum that is in the transition programs in many high schools across the country. So those are the 18 to 21-year-old programs where people with disabilities can transition into after high school. We're the first adult program that is using this curriculum, so they're really excited to see our outcomes with this. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm with the Issaquah History Museums. And we received a grant of $3,000 to help support our individual fundraising. So a few years ago, just to put this in some context, our organization did a lot of strategic planning in order to try and figure out how we were going to meet the needs of Issaquah's today's community, the contemporary community that's living here. And from there, we went on to a facilities plan, and the city kindly helped pay for a feasibility study to figure out the best place and the best way to store our artifacts. And so the emphasis on fundraising came from the idea that we were soon going to be launching a capital campaign. So we did a project with the UW fundraising certificate program. And one of the things that they recommended in order to improve our fundraising and development was to invest in a donor database and to do some donor strategizing. So funds from the city enabled us to invest in donor search, which is a prospect database. And we were able to identify the people that we currently have as prospects who we should develop and come up with a development plan for them. It also helped us identify about 2,500 other prospects who we can reach out to. And so in the coming year, we're planning on having a couple different mailings to these people to let them know about our programs and our events, and to try and start building a relationship with a new group of potential donors who we haven't reached out to in the past. It's a small gift, so it's sort of a small report, but it's made a huge impact. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Dute. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park. And I want to just thank the council for your ongoing support. Our 2017 grant award was a $25,000 capacity building grant for staffing. Oh. Sorry. There we go. Thank you. Huh. It didn't load. There we go. Thank you. And so your grant, I'm going to jump right into some of the things we've done in 2017. We really, we've done a lot of enhancements to the park. You can see we installed and dedicated a native plant trail in partnership with the Snoqualmie Tribe. We've done numerous restoration events in the park with Mount Sasan Greenway, our AmeriCorps service member, and the city of Issaquah. And we continue to do those restoration events, if not monthly, every other month. We publicize, not only our own, we have four signature FLISPA events, but every month we're publicizing three to four events in the park because the park, the state parks don't really have the bandwidth to do that. So we've brought in, you can see we brought in almost more than 5,000 guests into the park with our own events and promoting the AVP Beer Garden, Special Needs Play Days, and Get Outdoors Expo, which is a big event, which promotes all kinds of activities to get outdoors. And then there's a myriad of other events. And you can see that park attendance has increased 150 cents since the opening of the All Access Playground in 2016. And so these are just some of the things that we do. We really advocate and just support everything that's going on in the park. And I know last time, we had a big discussion on our finances and how our revenue was heavily grant-based. And you can see in the last couple of years, we've made really strong strides. The blue portion is grants, the orange is fundraising, and the remainder is individual giving. So you can see how the percentage has really flipped from relying on the grants from the city of Sammamish and the city of Issaquah down to, in 2018, our conservative budget is that your grants are less than half of our entire budget. So I think.
So what would that, if I was looking at that in absolute dollars rather than fractions, how would that look over time?
Well, our budget in 2018 is about $96,000, and the grants make up about $35,000 of that.
And how would that compare, let's say, to 2015?
Well, 2015, the grants, where you could see, were almost the full percentage of our budget, which was maybe $40,000, $50,000 back then.
Got it.
So these grants have really enabled us to grow capacity in terms of staffing, in terms of what we can accomplish as an organization.
Right. Thank you. Other questions?
I think I have one more slide here, if I can do this right. Oh, and we just, we wanted to refer to the importance of our group in terms of tourism in Issaquah. We all know that the park is amazing and that it's a respite for humans and important to the wildlife in our area. But we also want to make sure that we bring in tourists into this area. And the park was identified as one of the six most important places in Issaquah that tourists want to come to. And so when you support the Friends Group, you help us advocate and support the park, which is really integral to bringing tourism dollars into Issaquah and Sammamish. Because when people come here, obviously, they shop, they eat in restaurants. And so we just wanted to, and this was based on a 2014 study that the city of Issaquah did on tourism. And so we just wanted to thank you for your ongoing support. You're obviously integral to our success. This grant has enabled us to increase executive director hours. We're now at 25 hours a week. And we've added an operations manager, and we have a social media consultant. So you've really, you know, enabled us to really do great things in the park. We want to thank you for that.
Looks like there aren't any other questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, I got it right that time. This little, can you show me how you change the slides before I do it wrong? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for supporting FISH. I'm Robin Kelly, Executive Director of Friends of the Issaquah Salmon Hattery, or FISH. And you awarded to us $10,000 this year because mid-year last year, our executive director gave her notice. It had been a part-time position, but the board was fully aware that it needed to be a full-time position. So when she left, they made it a full-time position, but it was mid-budget, so they hadn't budgeted for that increased salary. And so this really bridged that gap, so we appreciate it. Increasing that time allowed me, as the executive director, to put much more time into research and strategies into funding organizations and funding sources that we hadn't ever been able to do before because there just wasn't time. So with that, not only was I learning the job, it took a little bit longer for us to use the hours for the fundraising training because I was also learning the job. But that worked out well because it integrated together with the training. So as I was learning the job, I was learning how I could do it better and more efficiently. And so we were able to spend a lot more time on potential funding organizations. We still do that. What I've learned through a lot of my training, I'm able to keep implementing. Also, with the additional staff time last year, we were able to submit and be awarded the Community Environmental Award from the city of Issaquah and the Community Citizen of the Year from the Grange Organization in Issaquah. And why that's important is because often, as new applicants for grants, you're not known, and so it helps add to our collateral materials and credentials as we do apply. So with the professional training, there's a series, the Spark the Fire Grant Writing, that covers a lot of the different elements. And even though I had come from an organization that
that did a lot of sponsorships, those are different than grants, and what they're looking for is different. So, that really helped me understand it. I also was able to work with two different mentors who looked at the property that we have and the assets that we have and talked about what kind of organizations would be interested that maybe we hadn't ever approached before. We talked about the STEM awareness now in our school district because so much of what we do is education with youth. And so, how we could make sure that the story, our story brought that to the forefront so that as we were approaching foundations that had more of a science base, that this would align more obviously for them. And then, also, we were able to subscribe to a weekly grant publication that we'd not had funding to do before that gave us the ability in an easier way to have access to a lot of potential new grants. With the increase of time and the skills and knowledge, we increased one grant alone by four times. And I think that that's significant, just with one. We were able to take on the new project with the additional time and work with the Arts Commission to do a community project where we worked with all different parts of our community to have a mosaic stained glass salmon wall at the hatchery. And again, part of why that's significant is it builds awareness of the organization. It empowers and incorporates more of the community into the organization. So, when we're talking to groups, then the name of Friends and Fish is known more readily than it had been in the past. And with that, it also gave us the chance for media coverage that we wouldn't have had without that project. So, there was a real value to that attention as well. The other new project we were able to do was work with an Eagle Scout candidate on his Eagle Scout project, which was the commemorative bricks or pavers. And that generated over $10,000 of an anticipated income for us, which was significant. And it's ongoing because it didn't have an end in sight. That also gave us the opportunity for much more media attention and public outreach than we'd had in the past. And just as some numbers, we were able, in the previous year, to submit grants to about 12 funding organizations or do significant work to know if it was appropriate to send to those 12. And in 2017, there were 27 organizations that we identified as real potential funders. And depending on their funding cycles, we might have missed their funding cycle, but now, we understand it and know it and can move forward with that information. And with the mentors and this additional outreach, we also had 13 additional sponsors and donors that were identified that would align with the type of work that we do. We also have salmon talks, which are relevant topics to attract corporate sponsors. We're paying more attention to those. We presented one in 2017, and we already have three planned for 2018. And again, relative to the outreach and the contacts that will align with our mission and initiatives. We're looking at another art project because that was so successful and brought so much attention to the organization and also built a lot of community in what we do, where it wasn't just the school kids coming on the buses in the fall, but it was really people that were engaged in our activity centers throughout the year. We're working on our summer camp enrollment with this extra time and with sponsors and corporate funding to make sure that we can have it be attractive and robust to attract other families and donors. And then, also, as I mentioned before, just the STEM-based outreach. Because it is a science-based curriculum, the schools are changing how they're looking at science fairs and those types of activities with the school and the students. And so, making sure that we understand their new approach and dialogue and that we align with it so the students aren't hearing one thing at school, and then they get to the hatchery and we're using some other vernacular terminology where there's a disconnect for them and their families. And if there are any questions?
I just want to say, that mosaic is gorgeous. It was really, it was beautiful when it went in. And I saw it the first weekend that was there. It's really added quite a bit.
I have to share, literally today, we had someone come into our office from Arizona who had done a Google search of mosaics, and it came up. And she was coming to find the mosaic that was at the hatchery. Awesome, yeah.
Whole new revenue stream for tourism in the city. Who knew? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your ongoing support of At Work and for the $20,000 capacity grant. And I'd also like to commend you because not often do funders invest in infrastructure and capacity. It's really hard to find those kinds of resources. And as you can tell, it's making a significant impact, as it did for At Work. Over the last couple of years, At Work has been working on a technology improvement project. And we have become electronified. We have no paper files for the people we serve. The staff that work with people out in the community, they enter all of their case notes and time they spend through mobile apps and a customized system that allows us to really capture what we're doing and track our outcomes. And for At Work, our name is our goal. We help people with intellectual and developmental disabilities get good jobs because it gives them full and meaningful life and all of those intrinsic things that you get from contributing and working. And they pay taxes. And they contribute to the bottom line of many businesses here in Issaquah and throughout all of King County. And so, that's our primary goal. Plus, the goal of this project, then, was to increase our effectiveness through technology improvements. And these are all folks who either live and/or work in Issaquah at places like Microsoft, The Glasslamp, Bar &amp; Grill, YMCA, and Costco. So, you helped us purchase some new software. You helped us hire an IT consultant and really drill down into what we needed to take the next step in that electronification. So, we needed electronic timekeeping, time and attendance. We needed a really good human resource management system that could help us not only track time so that we could do better work and more efficient work, but to track the staff training that's required for our staff to be credentialed and work out in the field. And so, we have a whole new system in place that staff have been trained on that has been functional for the last several months and is giving us a lot better data that managers can use to serve people better and more effectively. Then, we went to the next step of really looking at our financial software systems because it all needs to tie in with the time and attendance and the record-keeping for the kinds of services we deliver so we can calculate the cost-benefit and know that if we're spending our time in a certain area, we're actually getting the return on the investment that we want and that we're not wasting money on additional admin or things that aren't getting us to that goal of a really good job for someone. So, we really did some in-depth needs analysis and didn't get to the place of actually picking the final software. We will do that on Friday of this week. We got, because we had another, a couple of new software introduced as this consultant's working with us really understood our situation. And we have a really big hairy audacious goal to serve 1,101 people by 2021. And right now, we're at about 350, I think. And this has allowed us to get a lot closer to that. So, we really are looking towards the future with those decisions that we're making. And so, we had some outcomes that we had put in the grant. And we exceeded them. We said we would start, we would serve 50 new people. There's about 5,000 people in King County that want employment services that have an intellectual and developmental disability. We were able to serve 80, which is twice the number of people, most people we've ever brought in new in any previous year. So, and that's not all the technology improvement project, but a lot of it is, of managing caseloads and geographies and time that staff has spent. Increasing billable time, being able to capture what a staff does, and if it's billable, being able to bill that to our government funders, that is a lot a result of this project. So, a $20,000 investment for a $300,000 return is pretty good. And some of that's from those new people coming in that are bringing fees. It's also from that efficiency we gained. It's huge. You know, staff have gone from billable time of 100 hours a month to 130. And that means a lot more people are getting served and getting the dream jobs that they want. And it allowed us to hire more staff. And it also allowed us to increase compensation for staff to be more competitive in our area, to reduce retention, I mean, reduce turnover and improve retention, which is really important. We had 75 job placements last year, the most ever. In the first quarter of this year, we've already placed 25. We're going to hit over 100 this year, we know for sure. Nine new job placements in Issaquah. Malarkey Safeway, Papa Murphy's, Stewon, At Work's owned landscaping business, QFC, The Corner Bakery Cafe, and Fred Meyer. We're supporting right now 30 Issaquah citizens with support and employment, whether that's job development, training, or coaching, and keeping them in their job. And this was a huge goal of ours. We were having to keep our front door shut. People were knocking. Help me, serve me, help me find a job. And we kept having to shut it when we would get to capacity. We had a goal to keep the front door open, and guess what it is now? So, thank you very much.
Questions? Counselor Member Ray?
Yes.
I have a quick question and also a comment. I mean, I think it's amazing what you've done with a little bit of seed money to really turn things around. How big is the organization? Your organization?
At Work has grown in the last five years from 3.5 million to 6, and has grown from serving about 200 people to close to 400 next year. And 70 staff now. We used to have five employment consultants when we really started focusing on community-integrated employment, and now, we have 35.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, thanks.
Thanks.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Wright. I'm the Executive Director at Art East. And I'm the last presentation, so it's kind of exciting. I wanted to talk about our expanded education program and really just thank you for being able to support us on this. We are an organization that does education exhibitions. We have a juried gallery. We support a lot of the community events. And we are really focused on our volunteers. We have a huge base of volunteers. And they're really excited. So, in the past, they've always said, if somebody wanted to do a class, they'd say, hey, that's great. And they just put a class together. And so, we kind of had a schedule where it was a little bit ad hoc, and we couldn't really predict what our results were or predict finances for it. So, by having a single point of contact for our education program and have an education manager, we have really changed the way that we're able to just represent the community and be able to build programming for the community. So, what we wanted to be able to do was actually look at things from a programming perspective, which we are. We're looking at all of our constituents of kids, teens, and adults and be able to provide programming around that. We have been able to manage and market camps for kids, which has been really valuable. We hadn't done that in the past as much. And more importantly, just be able to provide a consistent calendar of always having classes open. I guess the next slide. I don't know how to do it either. Okay. Click that one, and then that one. There we go. So, some of the things that we were able to do with this funding was be able to flex with our needs for the people we were trying to reach and the things that we knew were popular. So, we were able to leverage some different marketing outlets to be able to reach more kids and be able to do more camps. We were able to reprioritize the way that we were communicating with people. We've had a website. If you've been to our website, I'm sorry, we're changing it. It's really hard to register for classes, and it really kind of has stifled some of our growth in that area. So, that's something that we're able to focus on now because we've had a single point of contact for the education program. And we were able to remodel some of our underutilized spaces, like the annex. We've been able to do classes. We saw that there was a need for more glass classes. We were able to take one of our spaces and change that so we can do more classes there. And the outcomes are just, we've been able to flex. So, if we have more kids that want to do more summer camps, we've been able to change that, where before, we weren't able to make those adjustments so quickly because we weren't able to look at something holistically. We've been able to get a lot more repeat students, especially with our teens. We have six- and eight-week classes, and there's a lot of people that are signing up for those. So, that's exciting. We have been able to increase our class size each quarter. And in the summer camps, up 60% from 2016. So, a lot of growth, a lot of repeat people in the community, and we think that's great. And again, just making sure that we've got a consistent schedule of the things that we're doing. And this is one of the grants where you provided $15,000 last year. We've got $10,000 for next year. And that kind of programming of being able to help us figure this out and build a foundation has been so helpful for us because now that we've been able to see that we can flex and see that we can provide this kind of programming, we've really expanded for 2018 to say that, across the year, we have four themes that we will build to. And on those themes, we will have studios, free studios for people to come in and try new art, classes that follow that, and then be able to work with DIA to have big Saturday events that all map to those themes. So, by having a consistent resource in education, we wouldn't have been able to do that without that. So, thank you. Did you have any questions?
Nope, looks like we don't. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Amy?
Unless you have questions for me. It was a requirement of the grants that they would come report back to you on their outcomes. And so, in 2018, or 2019, the 2018 group will come do the same kind of presentation.
Wonderful. And with that, I'll ask if there's anybody in the public that wishes to speak to the community grants? Nope, all right. Paul?
I just want to make a comment. Amy, I remember maybe two years ago when you and others within the staff proposed taking this program and changing some of the criteria and allowing for capacity building, not just capital, but also in soft skills and capabilities. And this is a really great demonstration. Thanks for everybody who did show up. Just seeing these results, knowing that we can take our public money and enable you to be more effective and reach more of your clients and have that broad of an effect on members of this community is thrilling to see. And the whole concept, a lot of that concept came from Amy and others in the staff. So, thank you, and thanks to all of you as well.
Yeah, I think a few of our grantees pointed out this is really difficult money for them to receive. And funders really aren't lining up to fund, you know, new payroll systems. But it's something that can truly make a difference and really help them meet their mission. So, we're really pleased with where it's going.
Excellent. All right, and with that, we're going to move on to ID 0183, which is the I-90 Interchange Justification Report. And it's going to be presented by Kathy George with the Washington State Department of Transportation.
Lost your quorum there.
You're probably going to have to show me how to use this thing.
Got it?
Okay. Are you sure that's not it, the count, this one?
Is it all at the bottom?
Which one's ours? Is this it? No? No?
Did you have a thumb?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
The only important thing is how do I move forward.
These are the challenges we have when we have one common operating system and one common presentation tool. Just think, didn't, how much harder it would be.
King and Snohomish Counties. And we thank you for inviting us today to talk about the project. So, before I start, I'm here to talk about the I-90 Front Street IJR project that the legislature funded as part of Connecting Washington. But before I start, I'd like to introduce our team. My boss, John White, who is the Assistant Regional Administrator of King and Snohomish Counties, is not here today. But Tim Now is my Assistant Project Engineer, Adam Emerson, and my consultant team working on the project, Hilma Jimenez, and Dennis Sandstrom. Hilma is with ABAM, and Dennis is with Enviro Issues. So, couldn't do it without them. So, why we're here? So, since you probably don't know what an IJR is, I'm going to give a very brief overview of the interchange justification reports, provide an introduction to the I-90 Front Street project, and then give you some last-minute updates on some of the other big projects we're doing through Connecting Washington on the I-90 corridor. So, what is an IJR, and how is it used? So, Interstate Justification Report, which is what IJR stands for, is a report required by the Federal Highway Administration to make a break in interstate access. So, revise an existing access or add a new one. And what we do as part of that report is look at traffic existing and future traffic, existing safety, and project safety in the future. Look at planning and make sure that whatever's getting looked at is consistent with whatever your planning growth is. And the big thing with the IJRs and the feds is that the big goal is to show no degradation to the existing...I'm sorry, not used to using these. Show no degradation to the interstate due to its importance to the region. Not that it's not just important to you, but at the same time, they concede that, you know, that's also the access point for all the local communities, and, you know, it has an impact on your transportation system. So, how we tie this together is to balance the local, the regional, and federal purpose of the interstate is that we have to answer a question for them. Would local improvements meet the purpose and need of the project? And if it's yes, then we don't do an IJR. We pursue other options, and they're balanced. I'm going to get into that with this. And then, if not, then we move forward with the Interstate Justification Report. So, little history of where this came from. In 2012, we put together a corridor study out along I-90. It went from Bellevue out to North Bend. It was a commitment that we made to the federal highways following the Sunset Interchange project. They wanted to make sure that we had a 30-year vision of what was priority out there. And as a result of that, we identified 12 improvement projects, three of which were in the city of Issaquah. So, those three projects were the I-90 PQ Shoulder Project, which is under design at the moment, and then improvements at Front Street Interchange. Two options that they identified as a starting point in the study were a tight diamond interchange at Front Street, which is similar to a normal interchange. The ramps are just a bit closer, and the signals work, are coordinated together to work in unison. And a single-point urban interchange, which is top-right corner. And that, all the ramps go through one signal. It's a lot more efficient than two signals, but as you can see, it takes a lot more space. Right now, we have these, there's one down near Safeco Field, one up in Everett at 41st. So, if you've ever driven those, that's what they look like. Nationwide solution, they're all over the state. The other thing that came out of that report was identification of some new crossings in central Issaquah. So, either something at 11th or 12th to connect north-south, a multimodal option to get traffic across the highway since existing, I think...am I right that there are three ways to get across right now if you don't count Westlake-Samamish Parkway? So, you know, that would be Front, the new one, which of course, 4th, thank you, 4th, and then 17th, which is State Route 900. So, anyways, as part of this IJR study, all of this gets encompassed in. It's not just Front Street. It incorporates everything that came out of those studies. And we're also showing the central Issaquah plan because that actually identified these projects also. So, let's see. Scope. So, what are we doing as part of this project? We're developing an interstate justi...well, we're looking at developing a preferred alternative for potential improvements for Front Street interchange area. And as part of that study, we're looking way out to 18, all the way to 405, quite a way south, which I'll discuss further. The study that we're putting together is, we're required to complete it by June of 2019, but our goal is to get it done by December, end of December, so that the city or other interested stakeholders can pursue funding to move further with whatever preferred alternative would be. And our budget for this project is about $2.3 million. Outcomes of the study are identifying existing and future traffic demands, identifying impacts from different potential improvements on the regional road network. We want to make sure that whatever we pick, it doesn't, you know, have unintended consequences. Select a preferred alternative and have a document so that people can pursue further funding. So, this is an overview of our study. We had noticed to proceed last quarter, late November, I believe. We are currently in the process of collecting data and getting stakeholder input, which I'll discuss a little bit further after we get off of this. Be doing further travel demand forecasting and looking at, is there a local solution that doesn't have to touch the freeway? That's always a possibility. It doesn't happen very often, but...and if there is, then we conclude the IJR study and have to discuss next steps. If no, then we go to, well, the next phase. But actually, before you get there, local improvements. So, the next step then would be identifying and selecting a preferred alternative to the solution. It's not necessarily an interchange, but it's the outcome of the IJR. So, it's whatever's going to work best. And then, put together the interchange justification report and environmental scan, so it's a preliminary environmental report. Till you really get funding for design, it really doesn't make sense to start a significant environmental process because it expires. And that would also involve some preliminary engineering and conceptual level cost estimate. So, as I mentioned, we're doing data collection right now. This is how big of an area we're looking at. The model we're using is the Puget Sound Regional Council model. And what slide am I on? 11, I think. So, we're using the Puget Sound Regional Council model and updating that with data that we're collecting in town and modeling, starting an initial model to make sure that what we're starting with is reflective of what is actually happening in Issaquah.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah.
On the previous slide, you talked about a local solution that didn't touch the freeway or something like that. Could you give me an example? What were your...what's an example of that?
Well, you know, potentially, a crossing would not require an IJR. So, if I did something over the freeway, the feds would want to be involved in that, but I might not have to do a full study. Local roadway improvements. It doesn't happen very often, and I don't anticipate it here because you're kind of constrained in the north end with, you know, parallel streets. But, say, up in Marysville, they didn't have a very complete local network. So, some of the things they had to show first is that all, they connected together their local network and that they weren't relying on the freeway to solve the city problems. I don't see that happening here. You have a lake to the north. You have a lot of streets to the south that are constrained right now. So...
The original corridor study, I thought you said earlier, did identify the intersection number, it's 17, at Front Street, that it had, there was a need for improvements there. So, it ought to...I mean, just the scope of that, that report, I thought was what justified the IJR. I mean, we're looking at the intersection.
We're looking at that location, but again, we're going to look at a need and then make sure that whatever the solution is, addresses that need. That was kind of a very cursory look as part of the corridor study. This actually looks specifically at that location.
So, there's some criteria...so, there's some way of measuring the performance of interchange, let's say, at Front Street, exit number 17. And this study will look at that in more detail. I don't know what those parameters are. And maybe determine that no improvements are possible or not needed. I'm still not sure what we're looking at.
Well, it depends what our overall need is. If you're trying to get traffic north and south, and you've got a two-lane facility going on Front Street, you know, the question is, is will the interchange solve all the problems you're looking to solve? Or are there other options that might help with that?
So, you're saying then, we, the city of Issaquah, because that particular project is within kind of our boundary, we're the key stakeholder. Obviously, there's other stakeholders, but we have some type of performance outcome that we would like to see, and so, that'll be your primary project objective?
Well, I think, so if we go a little...one of the things we'll be doing with our stakeholder group, which is going to involve the city, and it also includes a lot of other stakeholders, is identify what need we're trying to fix and make sure everybody's on board. Then, we collect data. We do models to see how each alternative that can possibly, you know, I'm sure there are more than two alternatives that can solve it. A lot of times, some of those just don't work, and some do. So, I don't want to say there are only two ways to fix it.
I guess I'm still a little bit confused because when you jump as far as, earlier you mentioned, you know, potentially a tight diamond or something like that. When you go as far as identifying potential solutions, that tells me somebody's pretty sure there's an issue that needs to be resolved. So, now I'm hearing, well, we don't really know what the issues are.
Well, we have congestion there. I need to make sure everybody's on the same page as to what issue we're trying to solve. And, you know, is it getting people on the freeway? Is it getting people away from the freeway? The bottom line is, you've got a lot of traffic going down Front Street right now. Fixing the freeway might not solve that problem if that's what the goal of the study is.
Okay, so what...so, you had a time...did you have a timeline up earlier? Was that a timeline, or are those are just phases?
They're just phases, but the timeline is, we'll have, in six months, we're expecting that we will know, is there a local solution, or is it a freeway solution?
After all the stakeholders agree to what problem is we're trying to solve or...
Exactly.
...performance level we're trying to achieve, which we don't have yet.
Can I build on what you're talking about?
Councilmember Ray?
So, this is my understanding from what you're saying. We did the corridor study, and we said the Front Street interchange is not operating in an optimal manner from that study. I have the same questions that Councilmember Winterstein has, which is, okay, well, but what is the problem we're trying to solve? So, what I'm kind of picking up from you, so you can tell me if I'm wrong, is that we will now go into a study period to say, okay, what is the underlying cause of the congestion we see on this, on Exit 17? And therefore, is there an interchange solution to it, or is there another solution to it, or is there no solution to it? Am I on-base or off-base?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
And remember, it's been five years, an awful lot of traffic growth since then. Do I think there's another solution? I mean, anything we do, when they did this corridor study, they did not do a big model that looked at everything. And we want to make sure that whatever gets done out there, it doesn't have unintended consequences elsewhere that people didn't anticipate. That takes a traffic model to confirm.
I think the key point for me, because I was kind of struggling also trying to understand what your goal was, because you were then talking about, well, then we'll look at our goal. So, really, we have identified a problem, and now our next step is to really unravel that problem to understand, you know, what the root cause is and what a solution might be.
That's correct.
Okay.
Had I been organized well enough, I would have picked up as I, you know, that I would have brought up the, identify the need. And yes, congestion is the need. You know, getting rid of the congestion is the need. But, you know, we'll put together specific goals, and we'll be able to answer them with the modeling that we do.
Let me try to wrap it all together and put a bow around it. The study is supposed to be finalized in June of 2019. It's a $2.3 million study. Part of this study, it sounds like, is you're going to be coming back and saying what your understanding of the problem is, what you've heard from the stakeholders, and what potential solutions would do to address the problems that you've heard with the interchange.
That's correct.
Okay, great. Good? We good? We should move on?
Please.
Thanks.
All right.
Sorry for the confusion.
That's why we're here, to get to answer these questions.
So, again, as I said, we look at the model. The other thing that we're going to pull in is something called a dynamic traffic assignment model. So, what that does is, for each alternative we have, it says what traffic will...where traffic will move around. As we all know, there's something called Google Maps. If it's faster to go another way, people will go that way. That's, can't stop them unless you make it slower. So, there are improvements going on, projected to go along 18, that I'll talk about a little bit later. If we make fixes, does that bring more traffic to you? You know, those are the things we want to make sure, more traffic to something, you know, that we're fixing. So, and what that does is it takes into account congestion, other drivers, transit signal timings. It's more than we usually do on these studies. We're doing this up in Lake Stevens as part of our US2. We looked at it to see where people are going and what changes would reflect that. So...so, let's see. We can move on. So, what else we're doing is collecting data from all these signal locations in the city. So, make sure we have a firm grasp of what's going on and what will happen when we make improvements, each alternative, how it performs.
Question here?
Yeah.
Sheldon, you may be able to help us as well. In the not-too-distant future, there will be new intersections in town in proximity to this interchange that I'm guessing would have little red circles around them too, if they were actually operational today. But they're going to be very soon. So, with the chance...so, it's a dynamic environment. We have the 62nd Street extension that's under construction, should be complete by the end of this year. What's the impact of not including that? Or how should we view the fact that this study won't account for what the impact of that project's going to have?
Washdott is aware of that project and its completion date, and I believe that will be included in the model. I just, right now, it's not possible to collect data...
Right.
...on those intersections because they don't exist yet.
Right, and I think I heard him say, I think Kathy said earlier, that you're in data collection right now? And so, we have, that's going to...so, there's nobody traveling on Fourth Avenue right now. That's the one that's closed. She mentioned the three. And but that, when that is opened back up, I mean, the patterns of circulation inside Issaquah will change when 62nd Street is done.
Right.
Can you hand the microphone, please?
We got you on this one.
Oh, good, good.
Yeah. One of the first things that we'll be doing in our analysis is identifying a list of projects that are going to be open in 20 years and open in 40 years, or some area within that. And our model then includes then, we use the data from today to calibrate the model for today, and then we show these intersections open...
One of the first things that we'll be doing in our analysis is identifying a list of projects that are going to be open in 20 years and open in 40 years, or some area within that. And our model then includes then, we use the data from today to calibrate the model for today, and then we show these intersections open in different years. So you will be able to see all the projects that you have planned within the city that are capital funding, funded projects. Those will also be included in our model for what we call the year of opening, which is almost like a projection of when the project would be completed, which right now we're thinking is 2025. And then we will be looking also at projects that will be open in 2045, which is probably going to be our design year. And we're not only looking at your projects, but we're also looking at projects from Sound Transit, all the other, King County, all WashDOT projects, everything that's funded within the study area, the large study area that Kathy showed, that are projected to be open and are funded right now.
Okay, so the 62nd Street extension, though you're collecting data now at those red circles, all we can do is model what's going to happen on 62nd Street?
Correct. And we will use that, we will, so we will use the timing and the information we have now to calibrate the models, to make sure that the models are telling the truth, or at least closest to the truth, based on what we know today. And then we use then those models, add the new intersections to then predict, use some of the DTA analysis, the dynamic traffic assignment analysis that Kathy just mentioned, to see how traffic will shift once I open up a bottleneck in one area. Does it move the traffic to this other area? And based on the capacity of the new intersection, you'd be able to tell just about how many vehicles would show up at that intersection, though, because we don't have the information today.
Yeah, that, that's vitally important, because I'm pretty sure today, there's a lot of Issaquah residents and even non-residents that are mingling with your I-90 customers just to circulate inside the city. And when Fourth Street opens back up and the 62nd Street extension opens up, those Issaquah residents who are just trying to circulate in town won't be mingling as much at exits number, you know, 15 and 17. That'll change.
Absolutely. And one of the things that what we're doing right now is that we've done a pretty extensive big data collection through cell, cellphone tracking of origins and destinations. So right now, we're quantifying this big data to see how many vehicles are actually just going through the interchange that have no business in the City of Issaquah, started someplace and ended someplace else, and/or vehicles that are coming in, are stopping within your city, and what are the patterns that they're taking? We're using all of this information to calibrate our models and make better predictions, so that what we can solve then, we're trying to identify what the actual problem is, as opposed to what the perceived problem may be. And we're using the data to tell us what that is.
Thank you.
Thank you for that explanation.
So I think the other thing is also, we're pulling some data from before you closed Fourth.
Yes.
Because, because of that issue.
Sheldon closed Fourth, we didn't close.
Well, we didn't help things out with our fish passage a little bit sooner than that. So, let's see. So as I said, we're working with, with local stakeholders. We've identified these stakeholders that we're going to be interviewing. This is not a total list. This is what we're starting with. As other stakeholders, regional stakeholders on this list get identified, that, that there's value, that, that we're told that there's value in interviewing, they will be added to the list. And then some of these stakeholders are invited to be on our support team. So as we put together the IJR, I'll get to that in a second, they're going to be active in, in the IJR, helping us. I'll get there in a second. We're also going out interviewing local stakeholders to get their views on what the issue is, observations. We found this very valuable on our I-90 PQ shoulder and on our project up on US2, to go out and talk to stakeholders before we started, not going in with pre-assumed assumptions, because you guys are the, the people who use it, the, the region. You know, we're, we're over in Shoreline and don't live out here. So this gets us some of that data. We're also, if there are enough of these stakeholders interested and other business groups that get identified, we will be looking at a study interest group to brief them separate than the technical, the technical committee that's just going to get a little bit too big if we, if we have both groups together, but, to provide briefings to this. And then, this is our support team. So as Hilma puts together the IJR and works with her team of, of consultants, she'll be presenting this data to this support team and, and others, if others are identified, who can question, question what we're coming up with, ask other questions, make sure we're not missing anything. So stakeholder, we've got, what, how many meetings in the next six months? IJR support? Seven IJR support meetings in the next six months? Six months. We're interviewing seven stakeholders between the two back and, and more if necessary. So we're hoping from this that, you know, we can get stakeholder perspective in addition to the data that we're collecting. As Hilma said, to make sure, and that was a very good clarification, that the actual need is consistent with the perceived. So IJR support team, their role will be to help develop the purpose and need statement based on the data, provide guidance and support to our IJR consultant DOT team, evaluate data based on, on what we're providing, identify, help us identify alternatives that can solve whatever problems, issues that we're seeing, and review the results, and they'll help make the recommended, recommendation on the preferred alternative. So we are looking forward to moving on with, with this project and can be back within the next six months, or when we get, you know, recommendation from Sheldon that we have enough information that you guys would be interested in, but definitely before we move forward with a preferred alternative. So that's all I have to say about I-90.
Councilmember Winterstein?
I'll give you a chance, okay. Kathy, on your regional partners slide, I understand the proximity of the Snoqualmie tribe, but you also list the Stilligwamish and the Mukul shoots. What, what is their, what's their stake in this project?
Those are, what, native and accustomed hunting fishing grounds? So we're required to include them in there. They're not, as far as I know, they haven't shown interest, but we're required to contact and see if they have an interest in participating. So usually, I mean, Stilligwa, I actually, I knew the Yakma, because we ran into that with the PQ shoulder project, but the Stilligwamish kind of surprised me. But on the whole, if it's not, you know, if we're not impacting fish culverts, typically not a lot of interest in being involved in the project. I would expect that the Snoqualmie and that when the project moves to the next step during the environmental phase, those tribes will probably have some interest, although I think Snoqualmie would be the primary tribe interested.
Okay, and on that slide, there's an, there's a icon or whatever in the bottom right, I can't read it. Go back, keep, what's the bottom right?
Is that Stilligwamish? I think that's.
No, Stilligwamish is.
It's another one of the tribes.
It's a tribe?
Is that the Yakma?
That's the Yakma, okay, thank you.
I just want to make sure that one of the things that you said was coming back to us when you and Sheldon agreed that you have enough information to, to want to talk to us, and before moving forward with a preferred alternative.
Correct.
So I, I want to make sure I understand, because I thought you don't move forward with a preferred alternative until the study is finalized in June of 2019. What am I misunderstanding?
We don't move forward preparing an IJR on the preferred alternative. So, yeah, we can't move forward with the project until the IJR is completed and an environmental document's completed, but the environmental document isn't part of this phase, so.
So you're going to detail, as part of the IJR, one of the deliverables isn't just where the problems are and what potential solutions would do to address the problems that are, that will be identified, but rather, you're going to flesh out a particular solution more so than other solutions?
That would be correct.
And that will also be delivered in June of 2019?
That's correct, yes.
Sheldon?
If I could put a little bit more clarification to that. Excellent questions, Councilmember Martz. The process of the IJR is going to identify some alternatives. Before a preferred alternative is selected to be able to move forward to the final portions of finishing the IJR, we're going to be back in front of council, informing the council of alternatives and being able to have a conversation about it, so that we're all on the same page moving forward with a preferred alternative. So there is going to be another point in time during the study, which the council's going to get information, when there are alternatives, not just, here's the preferred.
Got it. Very helpful. Other questions? Councilmember Bateese?
Thank you. There were, in, in our packet, there, there's one more slide at the end that just talks about other I-90 corridor project. Okay, you're going to cover that.
So if there's anything else on Front Street, I figured I probably should have put the question first.
Thank you.
So we have two other major project, improvement projects. You know, there are some preservation panel replacement projects, which I don't have information on with me. But the I-90 East Gate to SR900 project, we are looking at construction scheduled for 2019. We are putting together plans on that project. And what we're looking at at this point is a project that goes from the Lake Simamish interchange with, with an auxiliary lane up to East Gate in the westbound direction, same in the eastbound direction. In the westbound direction, we'll also be constructing an extended off-ramp to get some of the traffic off out of the congestion. We had originally proposed to go out all the way or start the lane at SR900, but what we found with the increased traffic growth is that if we started it at SR900, we were going to make everybody's trip longer. So this improves the trip for Issaquah. But one of the big things that we're struggling with is that there's not enough capacity at the 405 interchange. A lot of people are heading up to Bellevue, and until that interchange gets addressed, you know, we're, we have limitations on, on how much we can address traffic, but it does clear up a lot of the, the congestion in Issaquah in the morning, so. And contact for that, and, you know, we can email this out if you need it, is Masood Kiyenda, who actually works for me in my office. SR, I-90 SR18 interchange, a big $150 million project. It includes a rebuild of the interchange and relocation of the weigh station that is on the north side of the interchange, and also widening I-90 quite a distance south.
I-18.
18, thank you. So that project, they are just in the process. They have selected a consultant, CH2M Hill, and they are just about, I think they're just about ready to start putting together, scoping the, the contract to develop that work. Public engagement and design begins this summer, and construction's quite a number of years out. I've got to actually go through an IJR. At the moment, they're talking about a diverging diamond interchange, which is a, a new concept. And I suggest if you're interested in it, to Google it. It moves, it does some strange things, but, you know, when you come into an interchange, it actually, you, you cross over to the, the, instead of staying on the right, you cross over to the left, have a free turn onto the, onto the ramps, so less impact with signals. They've, they're constructing one down in Lacey at the Hawks Prairie interchange, and they've got quite a number of these around the country, and they are pretty effective with traffic. The other thing is, SR18 has an awful lot of sensitive areas, streams and wetlands on both sides. Improvements there are going to have impacts on the environment, and so they're going to have a pretty significant environmental process. I don't know the exact construction timeframe, but my guess is it's about four years out for start on it.
Can I ask, what's the order of magnitude of the budgets on those two projects?
The I-90 East Gate is about $69 million. The I-90 SR18 improvement project is $150 million. And, and Front Street's just a study, but.
Right.
My guess is it's a, it's a, it's going to have a pretty hefty front tag, price tag, depending on what you do, so. And that project manager is, is one of my peers. He's over a portion of the program that the legislature advanced this past session. So he's over this, and, and another project up in Redmond, on their 520, what is that, Overlake, Overlake off-ramp out near the Overlake Station, and then something down in Federal Way. So, and that is the end of the presentation. If you have more questions.
Right. Do we have any other questions? No? All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
And answering all of our questions. We really appreciate it. Do we have any public comment on this item? Yes, if you'll come to the microphone? You have three minutes.
Lindsay Walsh, speaking as an individual here. This presentation left me with a lot of questions here. I'm, I know that the citizens of Issaquah really care about this interchange, so I'm just going to list my questions, because I've got a ton. What's the next feedback touchpoint for the council, and what can we expect to see at this point? Can we get a full timeline on those various meetings, the decision points, the things that we should be aware of? Can we, how can we have more transparency on this process? This presented some information, but it was very obscure with, when are things actually going to happen? How can the public get involved right now? Is there a sign up for any of the stakeholder groups? Is there an informational email list? Is there an online survey, something where somebody can provide feedback? From the council's standpoint, how can the council and the city take the next steps to kind of be prepared to meet any of WashDOT's needs, any of the information that they're going to request? How can we look at, you know, the, the discussions they were having for the IGR meeting were the interchange problems, some of the potential solutions, what a local solution would be? How can we anticipate that? Get ahead of that problem, start thinking about it internally, to make sure that we are not holding up the process? Do we have a council representative on the IGR stakeholder group, or is it a city staff member? And how is that information then going to come back to council? Will the city get the data that WashDOT is completing with their traffic studies? And how can we better use that for city benefit, so that we're using that as we're looking at our overall traffic problems? And then, how does this project timeline work with the new transportation commission that's coming on this year? Are they going to be involved at all in that process? Can they be looped in as that becomes available? So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment this evening? Nope. All right, well, thank you very much. Now we are going to move to reports on regional activities or issues. So does anyone wish to give a report this evening? Ooh. All right, well, with that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.